Good evening. The Board of Trustees of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District is now convened in a special call meeting on Thursday, April 12th, in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center, 10-300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas at 6:00 PM. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. This meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. This item was placed on our non-consensus agenda for tonight's meeting. It is an action item for this special part of our meeting tonight. The Board will consider adopting a resolution nominating Dr. Mark Henry for the Texas Association of School Board Superintendent of the Year. If any member wishes to remove this item for further discussion, please do so at this time. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the non-consensus item as recommended or amended.
I moved that the Board adopt a resolution nominating Dr. Mark Henry for the Texas Association of School Board Superintendent of the Year.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion before we vote?
I would like to say a few comments. You know, I don't think we nominate anybody for the highest level of recognition for the state without giving it due consideration. And certainly, Mark, you have made a positive impact since you have come to this district. Under your guidance, programs that existed have flourished. A good example of that is we went to the State School Board Convention, TASB. One of your project ideas was on full display, and certainly, the Bob and Linda team that we've seen over the past six years had to carry your idea out. But that idea literally fired the imagination of not just trustees, but of administrative people, including the superintendent who came up and wanted to know the details. But you also captured the heart of the people who was there, demonstrated by the gentleman from the audience, who was so impressed with the concept, he came up onstage and gave Linda a hug for doing it. Yes, it's a tribute to the Bob and Linda show, but it was, in fact, your impetus to address reading scores, and that is what we're all about. Your incremental concept is one that is well-founded in research. You know, as trustees across the state, we have to be careful to be able to differentiate between true innovation and disruptive change. And you have always been a champion of that innovation that is sustainable and scalable and repeatable, which is significant. The fact that this district is the low-cost leader in quality education, not only in the state of Texas, but as we know, a leader among the 100 largest school districts in the United States, is a tribute to your leadership. Great leadership does not happen if you do not surround yourself with great leaders, but that means you have to attract others, and then you have to figure out how to keep them. So when some of your people are giving a demonstration, and they get job offers after the demonstration, you have your work cut out for you. So I am pleased to be able to second your nomination. It is well-deserved, and certainly from my perspective, and having served briefly on TASB, you are the preeminent superintendent in the state of Texas.
Yes, Mr. Bob.
Darcy, you want to go?
Oh, I didn't.
Okay, no, okay.
That's all behalf.
Dr. Henry, as you know, for the past three years, I've served on the superintendent cert at the TASB level in Austin, and I've seen no fewer than 55 superintendents come across in front of us in those three years. And every one I listen to, I think back on how fortunate we are to have you as our leader. And if you get up there and you make it, I don't get to serve on that committee, but I will probably be piping in my thoughts periodically. No, they won't let me do that either. But I just know that everything that I hear and the wonderful things I hear from other districts, you were a fantastic choice of ours to bring onboard, and everything that you've done has been positive, and it's an honor for me to be able to serve on this Board. And I feel like it's an honor for the Board to nominate you for this coveted position and award. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't add anything to that, plus we're on TV, you know. Be nice to you right now. It's your moment to shine. No jabs. I know, I know, this is really awkward for me.
I almost think you're mad at me.
There's a filter we didn't know we had.
Dr. Mark, I'll say this, that when we were searching for a superintendent, we saw your work that you've done in Kalina Park and other places. We felt you were the right person for Cyfair, and you've proved that and more. And we were really looking for academic achievement and for closing the gap and for making sure that we didn't just maintain, but we improved as an educational organization. But beyond that, what I've appreciated about you is your expanse into the community. You didn't stay here just within the four walls of Cyfair ISD, because the people who place their kids in our schools, also people who are in business, they're in churches, they're in different civic clubs and the like, and you have reached beyond the four walls of this district and touched the width and breadth of this district and people's lives. And that is what is so great, from the Educational Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, and then just reflecting back upon these T-shirts that we're wearing, the superintendent's fun run, to see the community come out, gosh, that just speaks volumes of your leadership. And so, yeah, we are glad to vote you in, and they better choose the right one. Amen. So we're glad. Anyone else who was in favor, would you please signify by raising your right hand? All right, it's unanimous. All right, thank you.
Could I just make a comment before we close it? Just one little comment, and I don't seem in here, but about five years ago, I had a conversation, and I know a lot of the staff out here have heard this, had a conversation with Mike Smith, and he was principal at Cyfair High School at the time, and we were talking about how fortunate and how blessed we are to be in Cyfair ISD, and I told him, I said, "Mike, I really, I get up every morning and I pinch myself because I'm the superintendent of Cypress Fairbanks ISD, and it's really, from a professional standpoint, I think, well, I don't think, I know, because I've been all around the state. This is the preeminent job and the preeminent district in the state of Texas, from size to efficiency to academic performance to..." And I try to convince people that have never been here, I said, "We have 117,000 students, over 700,000 people that live within our borders, and we're a community school. And the only way that can happen is that you have a school district like Cyfair ISD that reaches out to the community." All of these people in here that work closely with me on a day-to-day basis, they would tell you that I certainly don't deserve the honor that you're giving me today. I'm really just truly surrounded by a great team, from the seven people who serve on the senior leadership team all the way to the campuses and operations. And I really, you know you're getting old, Dr. Obertree, when you go to these meetings, and they say, "Well, how much longer are you going to work?" And that's how you know that you're getting a little long in the tooth. But I said, "You know, it's hard to quit, because my friends and the people that I enjoy being around are in Cyfair ISD and the Cyfair community." And that not only includes the staff that I work with, but that includes board members. I've never thought that a board and a superintendent could not be friends and work together. We may have different roles, but we have the same mission, and that mission is to improve the lives of students and families in our community. And the only way that can happen is when we work together. So thank y'all for this honor, and thank you. I don't really need to win this, I don't really even care, and you may or may not believe that, as long as I get to come back and serve in this capacity in May. So thank you.
No, you need to win. I don't want to quote Ricky Bobby, but you need to win this, I can tell you that right now.
And let's just hope, Bob, they don't listen to recordings of board meetings either. They won't listen to that, saying, "I don't need to win." Okay, just cut that, okay?
John, could I make one other comment?
Okay.
Couple of years ago, I was up in Dallas, I presented at TASBO, and of course Frankie Jackson was being honored there. And they had a little reception afterwards for all presenters, and so I went out and was chatting with people. And a superintendent, whose name I don't know, never met the man before, came up to me and said, "Y'all need to make certain you hold on to Dr. Mark Henry." He said, "You'll never find another one." So I tried to figure out what district he was from.
He's my dad.
Well, Mark, you know, I don't know how to tell you this, he was younger than you, and I don't think he looked a whole lot like you, but y'all could be related. And I make that point because to be a great leader, you have to...
...in the committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, April 12th, in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center, 10-300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas at 6:00 PM, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, April 16, 2018, school board agenda designated as action items, and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted, and the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are in the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on CFTV Channel 16 and CFTV Online on the district website. They will be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you refrain from talking while others are speaking, and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would like to also take this opportunity to thank, oh, well, we don't have any CLC, okay, or any Boy Scouts tonight. All right. We do have a Boy Scout, all right. Would you stand? Tell us your name, what troop. What school do you go to? Smith Middle School. Glad to have you. Thank you. The Board will hear the following report on Monday, April 16th, and this is for A, the administration will provide an oral report on the instructional technology. We'll receive that on Monday. Under action items, what? Recognitions? Okay. The Board will recognize Technology Services Staff along with Strategic Partners, Presidio, Education Partners, Solution EPS, and ESC12, E-Rate Consulting for their hard work and support, and the district receiving $5.2 million in E-Rate reimbursement funds. Is that right? Okay. Five point two. All right, we'll take it. Presidio has been responsible for the network electronic refresh as part of the 2014 bond technology infrastructure upgrade. EPS helped identify E-Rate funding reimbursement opportunities and in the overall technology architecture design. ESC12, E-Rate Consulting filed all the E-Rate paperwork and responded to questions from universal service at the administrative company. And so Frankie Jackson will...
Good evening. It's an honor to introduce our team. That's exactly right. Five point two million dollars is what we've received, and I was looking back at my notes. This time last year, I had reported that we would be receiving $10 million, and if you remember, we took $3 million, about $3 million in recognitions at the last board meeting. So for tonight, we're recognizing this team of fine individuals that have worked so hard with us to assure that we've done all of the right filings and the right implementation to bring this funding back to our district. So Katie, do you want to get the check?
While she's doing that, I went back and looked at our inventory, and we actually replaced over 2,000 network electronics, high-speed network electronic devices, in a total of almost 400 closets throughout our 100 facilities. In addition, we had over 1,000 network connections that had to be, I guess, reran and reconnected to high-speed controllers spanning across our data centers. And the impressive work, the hard work, was in replacing every one of these network electronics, which included patching and repatching over 86,000 patch ports. So it was a significant amount of work. So I'll call your name. First, we have Ed and Polly Gifford from Education Partner Solutions. So you can just go in front. You may want to just go in front. They are married, not brother and sister. And it was actually Ed and Polly Gifford that started working with us in 2014 is when we started putting the plan together to strategize about how our district could reap the benefits of E-Rate, which is a federally funded national program. Stay up there. Go, yeah. So Ed and Polly Gifford did all of the strategizing, all the network architecture. There's nobody in the state nor nation probably that knows E-Rate like Ed and Polly Gifford. They've been working, they have a choice, they can work with many districts, we're their top choice for a lot of reasons. I think it's because of our great team. So thank you. We also have the Presidio team. Presidio, you can join us. So what, we have Carlos Garcia, who is our primary account representative. This is Carlos here. Every week, Carlos would come around about Tuesday morning and say, "We received the money yet? Received the notification?" We say, "No, we haven't heard yet." And then Steve Mergest, who Carlos reports to, and then Doug Hayes, who is our project manager. So thank you very much. And then our prestigious team, of course, Katie Hernandez, who is our assistant. And no one knows this, but Katie is right in the middle. Everyone can clap for Katie, because Katie is certainly the person that did all of the paperwork and coordination between all of our departments and companies. So thank you, Katie. And then Paula Ross, we call her our princess. She is our Director of Instructional, Director of Network Infrastructure and Communications. She's a common thread that you'll see in all of our presentations. And then, of course, Leonard Chance. Leonard's in charge of all of our assets, and so he's able to experience what that's like, because that $3 million that we took at the last board meeting, we found out today that we've got two teams from USAC, which is the company that delivers the funding, are coming in two teams for audits. So all of the assets have to be coded and in our inventory and accurately reflected in order to receive those types of funds. And then lastly, we've got Kim Boland, who has... Lord, Kim worked all of the paperwork with the request for proposals, all of those that our Board of Trustees has approved for us. Kim is working in the background, doing such a hard work. So I'd just like to thank you all for a great plan coming together, and most of all, to be able to bring $5.2 million back to this district. So thank you very much.
and Frankie, thank you for all your leadership, and of course, she works very closely with Mr. Snow, and we appreciate his support of that area. Every time I go out to the campuses now, you know, no longer do I get questions about when's our technology going to get better. You can see technology in action all over this district, and we've really made huge leaps in the last four years. And I was speaking to a group of developers today, and they were asking me about technology, and I said, "I think Cyfair ISD does it right, because we know technology is important for our students and for learning, but we know that technology is a tool, and we still count on those relationships that we build with our teachers and our staff, and we use technology as a tool. And now it's a useful tool, because of all the great work that the Technology Department has helped bring about over the last few years, so we appreciate that." And the last thing is, and Deborah and Roy reminded me as I walked by, that we've got $5.2 million more dollars, but Linda, you don't get it. So I'm just making sure you're aware of that.
Thank you, Frankie, and all your team. I want to let our viewers know that on our agenda, Item A is our board shadow project, and we will do that Monday. That will be our board shadowing project on Monday. And we'll go to the action items, and hopefully have the right... Item 5A, the Board will consider approving tax refunds of $500 or greater for Cypress 5B, the Board will consider approving the minutes of the March 5, 2018 regular meeting. Okay, we'll go to the non-consensus action items. 6A, the Board will consider awarding bids and contracts and authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. Anyone have any questions? Matt Morgan, Nicole Ray, Frankie Jackson, Mary Jesloski, any questions? All right. These all items deal with, number one, carpet replacement for Bang Elementary, two, college readiness and career interest tests, three, copier fleet lease, four, customer support call center, five, data domain upgrade, six, graphic calculator purchases for high school and middle school materials system, nine, metal detector, 10, musical, 11, and management police place, swimming pool. Questions of any one of that? Yes, go ahead.
And Dr. Macias, I'll focus this one to you, because college readiness and the career interest test, and I think, kind of like Tom says, I think I ask this every year, but I just think it needs to be said, certainly in front of the TV cameras and people that are listening. Can you tell me, is the ACT Aspire 10 and the ACT something that is required across the state, or is this something that Cyfair does to help our students?
That is a decision that Cyfair has chosen to do, to provide for our students. We are required to have a college readiness test, but it does not have to be the Aspire. And so, as you said, we provided the Aspire 10 in 10th grade, and then at 11th grade, the ACT, which is a test, which is one of the tests that's used as an entry exam for college.
And we offer this to all kids, even at no cost to them, right?
That is correct, all students at no cost.
Okay, thank you.
Anything? Yes, John?
And Linda, we already know these answers, but I think it makes sense to ask, are the test results of Aspire, but also the ACT, which are both indications of college readiness, is that information shared with the parents of our students?
Yes, that information is shared with both the students and both the parents. And then we, as a district, look at that information to see what are the areas that we need to just work a little harder and make changes to our curriculum. And then we also use it to look at, are there any groups that are not scoring as high as we would like them to score, and then looking to see what we can do to help with that.
Thank you. And you correctly anticipated my next question. Something I didn't say tonight that was laudatory about Mark, simply because the state has changed the evaluation, but this district ranks very high on college readiness, not only against its immediate peer group, but across the entire state of Texas. And that incremental look that this district takes does in fact pay off, so I appreciate that. A couple of other questions. On number 12, police department vehicles, what's the estimated useful life of...
And it's really to help accommodate the growth and changing technologies and help align us with the financial procedures that our auditors would like to see us use and better ease for parents in registering and keeping track of all their children.
Excellent. An important area to, to address. That covers my questions, John. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll now go to item 6B. The board will consider approving a municipal advisor engagement letter between Cypress Fairbanks ISD and Post Oak Municipal Advisors LLP in connection with the issuance of obligations of indebtedness and in accordance with the terms of the engagement letter. Anyone have any questions of Stuart?
Just, Tom, before you start that, the last item, is it okay to move to consensus? I don't think you ever asked. Making sure.
Okay. You're right. Can we move that to consensus?
Yes.
Okay. That's right.
And John, I have a series of questions, but I went ahead and typed these out. So, I'm going to walk them around the dais, but I'll also give Stuart.
Okay. I will wait till you back.
Stuart, thank you for your recommendation. I will comment that some of these questions may be a little uncomfortable for both you, Stuart, as well as for you, Terrell. And certainly, we value your past service. And Stuart, we certainly value your recommendation to this board. You certainly have to have somebody that you're comfortable working with, but as a board, there are certain questions that it is incumbent upon us to ask. So, in the process of these, if I, because of my wording, if I step on anybody's toes, I'll apologize. So, in no particular order. First, best practice is send, says that you should send out an RFQ about every five years. When did we last send an RFQ out? And I'm going to go ahead and go through all my questions and you can answer as those that you want. For the change in firms, will the new firm have the same access to technical research and industry contacts that the predecessor firm has? Is there a size discrepancy in the two firms? Do we know the reason for the separation? Will the change of firms have any impact on our lead underwriters? Clearly, the financial advisor is of key importance. And certainly, when I was a public CFO, I heavily relied upon our financial advisor. But at the end of the day, the lead underwriters are the ones who do the heavy lifting. But it's important that, that there is a good relationship between the advisor and the lead underwriter as, as well as the district. How does the new compensation in this schedule compare to the prior compensation package? And is it comparable to that currently being offered out in the industry? And then here's the ones that are a little uncomfortable, but we have to ask them anyway. Are there any pending or settled lawsuits with your proposed new financial advisor of which this board should be aware? Are there any complaints with the SEC or non-consent agreements signed by any member of this new firm? That should be brought to the attention of the board. And then the last one, which is probably a little more on point, have any complaints been filed with FINRA that have not been satisfactorily resolved? And who is FINRA anyway and why should we care?
Okay. All good questions, Mr. Jackson. I'll try to, since I haven't, you handed me the questions in, in writing, I'll try to go through those in order, I think. When would, when we last sent out an RFQ? In Ju-, in July 2015, we, we sent out RFQs for financial advisory services. And after conducting interviews with a number of firms and performing our due diligence, we selected First Southwest, which is a division of Hilltop Securities. And Terrell Palmer was the financial advisor that was associated with First Southwest. Do they have the same access to technical research and contacts? And I would say, yes, both Mr. Palmer and Ms. Stefan. Not only did Terrell Palmer and, and leave Hilltop Securities, but also Francine Stefan, his right-hand person, left as well to form their own firm, Post Oak Municipal Advisors. And so, both Mr. Palmer and Ms. Stefan have a vast number of industry contacts and other resources at their disposal. So, is the size discrepancy of the, obviously, our current contract was with First Southwest, as I mentioned, a division of Hilltop Securities. And so, as far as size of corporate structure, certainly there is a, a big difference. However, Mr. Palmer carried about 20% or over 20% of the entire Hilltop Municipal Advisory Services book. And as far as the services that Mr. Palmer and Ms. Stefan provided and performed for us, we did not deal with any other individuals within Hilltop. So, as far as we were concerned, Hilltop Securities was Terrell Palmer and Francine Stefan. So, if you're asking if the smaller size of Post Oak Municipal Advisors will negatively impact the, their service to us, I would say that we, that, that we represent, currently, we represent Post Oak's largest client. And I would expect nothing less than Post Oak's finance service. Reason for the separation, as far as, my, my understanding is that there's been a change in the service direction at Hilltop Securities in that they were putting more resources for a push into other markets such as California, New York, and Ohio, to the detriment of the core financial advisory services in, in, in the business in Texas. And so, it's my understanding that's the reason for their separation. You ask if the, if there will be any impact or I guess negative impact with our lead underwriters? And I would say none whatsoever. Both Mr. Palmer and Ms. Stefan have outstanding relationships with all of the underwriting syndicates that we work with. And so, I, I would expect to see no change there at all. The compensation outlined in the engagement letter is comparable to the compensation provided to Hilltop Securities and it's also competitive within the industry itself. As far as any pending lawsuits, pending or settled lawsuits, there, as far as I'm aware, there are no lawsuits pending and there's no settled lawsuits. As far as any complaints with the SEC on any non-consent agreements, there are no, no complaints or SEC non-consent agreements. And FINRA, as far as FINRA goes, FINRA is, stands for the Financial Industry Regulatory Authority. And FINRA is a not-for-profit organization that was authorized by Congress to act as a regulatory body for broker, broker dealers to protect investors. And so, FINRA's responsibility, they enforce the rules governing broker dealers and examines firms for compliance of those rules. And, and again, there have been no complaints with FINRA regarding Post Oak Securities or Terrell Palmer.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions of Stuart or Mr. Palmer?
I just, I do have a comment to follow up. Tom does a, he's, for those of you that don't know, his financial IQ is, for mine is rock bottom. His is very high. So, Tom, I appreciate your due diligence with your questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Can we move this to consensus? All right.
We ought to ask him one just for being here. How long's your drive?
Thank you, Mr. Palmer, for coming and we'll, we'll spare you any questions. Okay. Come on, come on up.
Okay, here we go.
Come on up. We'll, we'll ask one. Come on.
Remember Stuart's the one that prompted this.
Stuart started it.
What, what's the, what's the, what's the one question?
The one question, I always have questions.
Sure.
And there's seldom just one question.
Okay.
Do you consider the current rate environment to be turbulent? And do you, how do you see that it, will it be impactful upon the sale of our bonds, either for new money or for refinancing going forth in the next six to 12 months?
I, I wouldn't describe it as turbulent. I would, I would describe it as remarkably low. If you look back at my, my 32-year career, and I've had to do that a lot lately, when I first started in this industry, we were, we were thrilled when we sold our first bond that was, you know, reasonable average life at below 6%. Today, we're selling your bonds because of y'all's amazingly high underlying credit rating, the credit rating of the permanent school fund as well. You're probably looking at selling your long-term fixed-rate bonds at a rate well below 4%. And so, there's a, there's a lot of discussion about the Fed increasing the, the short end of the yield curve. But all of that's doing is really flattening the yield curve and it's really giving y'all an opportunity. I'm sure y'all have had your treasure reports where you see that you earned a whopping 20 basis points on all of your funds for, for the month. Now, those rates are getting up into the, you know, in between 1 and 2%. And that's because of the Fed increasing the short end. The long end of the, of the yield curve where you're going to be issuing, an opportunity for the district to, to really get some low-cost funds to build the, the much-needed schools in the district and, and keep, it all translates into keeping your interest in sinking fund tax rate as low as possible. So, it's, it's really an op-, I, I don't look at it as volatile. I really look at it as an opportunity for the district to, to lock in some amazing rates.
Thank you, sir. That, that's an important answer for a couple of reasons. One, there's a lot of noise in the industry and it's important for we, as trustees, to have a better picture without the noise. But in the coming several months, we may have to make a strategic decision. And it's important for us to be mindful of what the interest rate environment is like and how it can impact us. So, I appreciate your financial advice.
Happy to help you and to guide you through that process. Good to see you all.
Yes, yes, just a minute.
Terrell, very unusual, but I'm going to ask you one question.
Sure.
With the prolifer-, proliferation of charter schools.
Yes.
In, in many districts, I have heard that it's having some effect on their bond rating and it's, it's ultimately going to cost local property taxpayers in higher interest rates. Now, we don't have that problem currently in Cyfair. We have a very low percentage of parents that choose charter schools, but I know some of our neighbors are experiencing some difficulty. Do you see that as a long-term, short-term or long-term issue for local public district, public school districts?
You know, Hilltop Securities was a financial advisor to a few of the charter schools that you would recognize, a YES college prep or I believe it was Ideal Charter Schools. And while I, I knew the banker, we, we talked a little bit about where are, where are you going? Where are charter schools going? And are they going to infringe, you know, on my independent school district students? And, and they believe that there's, there's a finite amount of charter schools that, that will be, that will be created and the number of students that will go into those charter schools. And they think they're about there. That industry believes that it is, that is, it, it's gone about as far as, as it can. And so, I don't think that there are many more charter schools that, that are going to be taken over or threatening independent school districts statewide. I, I haven't seen any kind of a ratings impact of charter schools by those charters losing a lot of students to, to charter schools. And, and I've really seen other charter schools in the Houston area is a little different from, from other areas around the state where, you know, school districts like Houston and Spring Branch have used charter schools as really a tool to bring some kind of fresh ideas into, into other areas. But I haven't, we are, you know, you know, our new firm, Post Oak Municipal Advisor, will not be working with charter schools and will, will be working in, you know, almost exclusively with independent school districts and, and try to help them with that process. And we'll, we'll, we'll stand by you as, as that, that's a, that's a fight that you and I have been at, in Austin recently. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of emotion in that fight right now. And, but we wanted you to know that we stand behind the independent school districts and are happy to help you with that, with that progress and that fight.
Just, just one comment, not a question, for Mr. Palmer. But I, I like your answer better than what I've heard the charter school, state charter school organization saying is, they currently have about 300,000 students roughly in the state of Texas and their goal is a million students. And most of those students, they're not going to come from West Texas, East Texas, small towns. They're, they're setting up shop in, in large metropolitan areas. And what I consider, they're doing nothing more than duplicating services, which is a very unconservative idea in my opinion. We're double-spending across this state for the same services. This is not your fault. I'm just, I'm just saying from the standpoint of local public school property taxpayers, you need to be aware that if they can continue the proliferation, it could have a very negative impact ultimately, I think, on local school district tax rates because the, the bonds are there and they have to be funded. And the number of students we have is a big part of that. So, just a comment.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you.
Well, I think we'll move that to consensus, right? Right? Item 6C, the board will consider approving instructional materials allotment and TEKS, TEKS certification for 2018, 2019. Any questions? Can we move that to consensus? Okay.
we'll, we'll, we'll stand by you as, as that, that's a, that's a fight that you and I have been in Austin recently, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of emotion in that fight right now, and, but we wanted you to know that we stand behind the independent school districts and are happy to help you with that, with that progress and that fight.
Just, just one comment, not a question, for Mr. Palmer, but I like your answer better than what I've heard the charter school, state charter school organization saying is, they currently have about 300,000 students roughly in the state of Texas, and their goal is a million students. And most of those students, they're not going to come from West Texas, East Texas, small towns. They're, they're setting up shop in, in large metropolitan areas, and what I consider they're doing nothing more than duplicating services, which is a very unconservative idea, in my opinion. We're double-spending across this state for the same services. This is not your fault. I'm just, I'm just saying from the standpoint of local public school property taxpayers, you need to be aware that if they can continue the proliferation, it could have a very negative impact ultimately, I think, on local school district tax rates, because the, the bonds are there and they have to be funded, and the number of students we have is a big part of that. So just a comment.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you.
We'll, I think we'll move that to consensus, right? Right? Item 6C, the board will consider approving instructional materials allotment and TEKS, TEKS certification for 2018-2019. Any questions? Can we move that to consensus? Okay. Item 6D, the board will consider approving on first reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. These are BBB, local, board members' elections, revised. Two, FFF, local, student welfare, student safety, this is an addition, add-on. Any questions? Can we move that to consensus? All right. Item 6E, the board will consider approving on second reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. And these are CDA, local, other revenues, investments, this is a revised. Two, DF, local, termination of employment, this is an add. Three, DH, local, employee standards, code of conduct, revised. And four, EED, local, instructional arrangements, students' schedules, revised. And five, EHBAF, local, special education, video/audio monitoring, revised. And six, EJ, local, academic guidance program, this is a delete. And seven, FFAA, local, wellness and health services, physical examinations, revised. Any questions? Can we move this, just Bob?
I'm sorry. Dr. Macias, the four EED local, where we're talking about instructional arrangements for student schedules, is that going to, is that part of the college academy that we're doing at Sidlakes? Or there, is it other things too? Or is that not what that is?
It, it, it could be part of the, of the college academy as we move forward with it. But actually, right now, that's, this is to be available for all students in 11th grade, if they'd like to take an additional course at Lone Star, either, either coming in late or early release to do that.
Okay. And that counts toward their graduation, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, maybe, any other questions? Can we move all that to? Yes.
For the video recording, is that as a result of the new law that was passed?
Is that the special ed, the one you're talking about?
You know, I think this is important enough. We obviously have all the information here, but, but would you briefly give us an overview on this?
Yes, Mr. Jackson, this is, the law was revised in the last session, and so there are some changes. What I will say is there are not that many changes, because the revisions to the law actually were modeled a lot, primarily on Cyfair ISD practices and regulations. Worked closely with Roy and his team, school administration has been amazing. When we were trying to build this plane, or as it was flying, we kind of came up with sort of how we would, how we would do it. And so when the next session came around and they were looking to tweak the law, they got input from school districts, including us. I actually even provided some testimony on the commissioner regulations, and so then they changed the law. They, they just clarified some things, put in place some things, like I said, that we were already doing as far as procedure. And so these changes just kind of clean up to make sure that our policy is consistent with the new law. Does that answer it?
That does. And part of the reason why I asked, asked the question, one, because it's important, but two, it's topical. You know, when we talk about exemplary leadership from this district, this district is leading in so many different areas, it's sometimes difficult for us to remember as trustees. Y'all do so many things very well that sometimes it becomes commonplace, and sometimes we just need to remind ourselves. So thank you.
All right. Can we move item 6E to consensus? All right. Item 6F, the board will consider approval and execution of the platform more elementary school. It's a standard. And can we move that to consensus? Okay, question?
Hey, Dylan, what's, what stands out differently in this plat from the, the previous?
So what it is, is when the property was first built, the developer gave to the district a parcel of land that was originally platted for a house, and it's where the bus loop exits out the, and the food service drive is. That is just being plotted to be shown on the maps as all one parcel of property, rather than two separate pieces owned by us.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right, can we move this to consensus?
Yes.
All right. Item 6G, the board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from the 2014 bond funds to the recommended contractor. An authorized superintendent or designee to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. One, the 2018 early learning centers, one and two renovations. Do you have any questions of Dylan? Yes.
Dylan? I have actually visited our, our ELCs. So explain why the renovations are necessary and what the objective of these are.
So the objective of this is to update both the energy efficiency with new lights, as well as new mechanical systems that will enhance both from an indoor air quality for the young children, but also from an energy use for the district. Also, we'll clean up the paint and, and then update all the security features. We have added card access to the building, similar to other campuses around the district, but this will go the further step to fulfill the bond program with those security features as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Can this be moved to consensus? All right. Item 6H, the board will consider approving the April 16, 2018 superintendent's contract recommendations to issue progressionary term and annual contracts for the 2018-2019 school year for administrators, non-teaching professionals, paraprofessionals, and teachers. Any questions? All right. Can this be moved to consensus? All right. Item, yes, go ahead.
I just want to make one, excuse me, I want to go back and make one statement that, I don't know, this has happened to me twice today, and some of y'all may understand this if, if you're my age or close to it, that you have two points to make, and you can remember one, and one of them leaves you. It's called the Rick Perry syndrome, by the way. So, but going, going back to Mr. Palmer, I, I did, the second part of my comment was I wanted to thank you for your new firm having a focus on ISDs. I think that's really important to us, Cyfair ISD. I know me personally, I know this board has a very strong belief in what real public education is, and I appreciate you and your new firm supporting what we consider real public education. So thank you.
All right. Item 6I, the district will consider a level four appeal, knuckles of a level three decision. And this will be done in closed session. Okay, well, let's, item six, well, item 7A, we'll go to that before we go into closed session. The board will discuss the superintendent's evaluation, 2016-2017. We'll also do that in closed session also, right? Okay, the board will now adjourn to closed session under the Texas Government Code, Open Meetings Act, for the purposes stated in the posting of this meeting. If the board determines that any final action, final vote or decision on any matter considered in the closed session is required, such final vote, action, decision, or decision shall be taken upon the reconvening of this meeting in open session or at subsequent, a subsequent meeting of the board in open session after proper notice has been posted. Thank you for coming. We'll now go into closed session. Yeah, we need a motion, Don. So moved by Tom. Second. All right, second by Don, and, all right.